Testing, testing, one, two, three. Testing, testing, one, two, three. Good afternoon, Joel. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you.
Oh, that's great news. I feel better like when I know it's the only one presenting and like he has audio.
What a lovely wet day to have a nice bit of rain.
Chair Murphy, it is now six o'clock. You can call the meeting to order.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'll call to order the Cattati Planning Commission meeting on November 1st, 2021. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hancock? Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Yes, here.
Vice Chair Lemus? Chair Murphy?
Here.
And Commissioner Rodriguez is absent today.
Thank you. We'll move into item C, which is approval of the minutes. Can I have someone make a motion to approve the minutes for June 21st, September 7th, and September 20th, 2021?
Some of these can't be approved because there's not enough people were at the meeting. So I want to say the first one, the June 21st, we need Sylvia. Because Chair Murphy, you were gone and
I was gone.
Neil was gone.
Okay.
And I think that's for the other one also because I was gone and Sylvia was gone on the 7th. So I don't think we have a quorum there. And let me look.
September 20th.
And unless Sylvia comes on, we don't have a quorum for the September 20th one either.
I'm here. Are we checking to see which day she was here?
I just trying to figure out who was, who was at what meeting and if we can, we can vote on them.
Yes. I missed, I know I missed a meeting along the way over the summer.
Let me look back.
That was the September 7th.
Does staff have any clarification on attendance? Just so we can confirm in writing?
This is Director House. I'm reviewing right now.
Okay.
If the commission wants to take items out of order, then I can be ready and come back to it. Or if you just want to give me just a couple of minutes, I can provide some direction.
I'm comfortable taking items out of order if the commissioners are comfortable as well.
That's fine. Yeah, I just, when I noticed, when I read the minutes, it just seemed like we were all a different meaning, so.
Yeah, thank you very much for calling that out. I appreciate it. Commissioner Lemus and Commissioner Hancock, are you guys comfortable with moving on to item D?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll return back to this at the end of the meeting. So we'll move on to item D, which is changes to the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Chair Murphy.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item E, which is oral and written comment. If we can open it up to any oral or written comment with a reminder to please limit your comments for items that are not agendized for tonight's discussion.
Chair Murphy, seeing no hands, we have no public comment.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move into item F, matters at hand. And I believe we will be turning this over for staff to walk us through the consideration of this proposed ordinance.
Chair Murphy and Commissioner members, added before you is a proposed, it's a public hearing for proposed ordinance, ordinance change to the city's ordinance regarding Vunnerf standards. And next slide, please. So I'll go over the history. You may remember, but back in May of this year, the planning commission held a workshop as part of the proposed objective design standards and open space standards. And staff proposed a menu of usable open space options. The Vunnerf was included as an option to help meet the requirements for providing common open space within a multifamily project. On June 21st of this year, the planning commission held a public hearing regarding the open space standards. And the planning commission voted to recommend approval of the Vunnerf option to the city council. Next slide, please. On June 21st of this year, the city council held a public hearing on the objective design standards and open space standards as recommended by the planning commission. The council discussed the Vunnerf concept at length and continued the item to allow staff to address questions and issues raised by the council regarding the Vunnerf as well as other proposed standards. Next slide, please. At the second public hearing held by the council on September 8th of this year, the council reached a consensus regarding the use of Vunners within private development projects and voted to remove the Vunnerf as a usable open space option. And instead directed staff to prepare an ordinance to generally require Vunners to be to be required, Vunners be required within certain multifamily projects. Next slide, please. So that brings us to today, November 1st, in this planning commission public hearing. And as directed by the council, staff has prepared draft standards, which are now before the planning commission for a hearing and recommendation to the city council. So I will now discuss what a Vunnerf is and what it isn't. And as you may recall, as discussed back in May, the Vunnerf is also known as a living street and also a multi-use zone. And the general principles of a Vunnerf are how it's, how it's different from a regular street. It has a visible entrance, which is usually a sign changing pavement. It has physical barriers. This is to force cars, motorists to slow down, separate pedestrians as needed. Basically reduce the visual width of the street. And also it's a shared, this is a shared space and the paved areas are used by both pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists can also use those. And the Vunnerf includes landscaping and street furniture. So it is a way to beautify and make use of the street. Next slide, please. So the Vunnerf basically is a Dutch word and this is an example of an existing Vunnerf in the Netherlands. And generally, most Vunners are converted to public streets. That's usually how they're seen. And this example is used because it kind of shows all the elements of a Vunnerf. In that it's, has special paving that is, can differentiate between the parking spaces and the pedestrian way. And but there's generally no curbs. Pedestrians and vehicles are using the same space. In this case, it also uses bollards to separate some areas where you don't want vehicles to cross. This particular example includes parallel parking spaces. And they also include forced traffic calming, such as the chicane in the middle of this one, which is a slight curb to force vehicles to slow down. And you see at the top of the photograph, you see where kind of the traditional public street is. And so generally there would need to be some kind of a transition or entrance at that location. Next slide, please. This shows an example of a Vunnerf in the United States. And this is Batavia, Illinois. And these, in the United States, these have generally been used for, in commercial areas to revitalize these areas to make them more walkable, pedestrian friendly. And in this case, the traditional street's been converted to a Vunnerf through removing the curbs in a lot of locations, adding planters, adding seating, combining planters and seating. And also this has some pedestrian-only areas as well as pedestrians are free to walk in the street. So this is kind of the example you would see in the United States. Next slide, please. This is showing that same street from another angle. And in this photo, you can easily see how the planters are integrated into the street as well as benches. And you see that the, basically the street, the pedestrian areas and the vehiculars can be combined. And it reads as one street that is shared. Next slide, please. This is an example in Santa Monica, California, where an existing residential street with mostly single-family homes has been converted to a Vunnerf, well, includes Vunnerf elements by integrating some landscaping, more decorative pavement. The street and the parking have different kinds of pavement. It makes the street look narrower and more walkable. And it slows traffic down, so it is a more walkable street. And I think in this particular case, this is basically a two-block-long street that has kind of been revitalized through using, by conversion and using Vunnerf concepts. Next slide, please. This is maybe a not so successful example of converting a street to a Vunnerf in Houston, Texas in a commercial office area. They've added the pavement, they've added chicane, but it's really not a place you maybe would want to stay and socialize. There's no seating. It's not a very active space. So this is kind of an effort that some cities have tried to upgrade an existing street. Next slide, please. This is an example that was shown in your staff report in Minneapolis, where the local newspaper's asking, is this just a kind of a fancy parking lot? It uses some Vunnerf standards with the pavement and some integrated landscaping, but it's basically does not really have pedestrian elements. The cars still are the predominant feature of the street. And it's really, maybe can help with this street, but it really has not turned this street into what's called a Vunnerf. It's really not a living street. Next slide, please. So what's before the commission is requiring Vunners in new residential development. So this is something unique. I'm not aware of other cities that have done this. This is something the council didn't like the concept, and so they directed a staff to come up with standards to require them. So this is an example. You may have been out there. This is on East Cattati Avenue, the Tower Apartments. And then the center includes a, a street that can, is in the central part of the project that includes a lot of Vunnerf standards. It just has some decorative paving. It, it looks like pedestrians could use it as well as cars. It's not dominated by the cars, so it is, you can see it being a multi-use street. In the center, the curbs have been eliminated. Just out of the photograph is a small, to the left is a open space green with some seating. They have bollards on the right in one, in a couple of locations to differentiate, to basically say that a car should stay out of that area. That's where the the mailboxes are located. And there's lots of pedestrian activity in that one location. So in that case, they've separated the pedestrians from the cars. But this is a local case where a Vunnerf comes, concept has been, been used within a multifamily project. So that's basically the kinds of projects that we are talking about this evening. Next slide, please. This is another view of the same project, showing what an intersection between a Vunnerf could look like, between a regular driveway. And you can see they, they look quite a bit different and function quite a bit differently. The Vunnerf looks and acts more like a street or alley. Where the parking area where, is basically looks like a, just a regular parking lot. So the concept is to require the Vunnerf concept to be included in generally most new multifamily developments as well as horizontal mixed-use developments. Next slide, please. So this show, this is an aerial view of the same project on East Cattati, showing in the circled in blue is a central part of the project, which is the Vunnerf concept. And then around there is a perimeter driveway. So it shows how it, how it's located centrally, how it's located centrally within the project. And basically complements the common open space within the project and can be used as common open space. And basically complements the common open space within the project, it can be used as common open space, even though cars are allowed to drive through it at slow speeds. Next slide, please. This is an example of a mixed-use project, horizontal mixed-use in Washington DC that's under construction. This concept could be used, let's say, in mixed-use developments on the in Catati, on the west side of one oh one, where there are proposals in the line of cars mixed-use development, in this particular case. The Wunnerf is only also just a part of the project, it's a central located area located in the middle, circled in blue, which accesses accesses parking, but there's other streets that carry most of the traffic. Next slide, please. This is a, shows that same project, what it would look like, so this is an example of a Wunnerf. So the street that you see there is can be used by pedestrians and vehicles, slow-moving vehicles. And at the end, there's a common courtyard with seating. In this particular case, this one uses curbing and which the proposed standards, before you generally would limit that. And this one does not have a lot of seating along, it's mostly just at the end, so the proposed standards would require seating throughout the Wunnerf. Next slide, please. So one thing that's important to a Wunnerf is the entrance, that needs to be clearly marked as an entrance, and this is a different zone where the speed limits are slower. This shows an example of a Wunnerf that uses, it's consistent with what's proposed here, it has a sign. It has, this one has a ramp up, it could be a chicane or something else that would force vehicles to slow down, there's a change in paving. You can see at the ramp up, the curb is then eliminated, and it goes forward with a curbless design. And also uses bollards in some cases, separate pedestrians if needed, and integrates landscaping. So this is, I would say, a good example of what's proposed in the standards before you tonight. Next slide, please. This is an example, another example, and this is in the in the UK of an existing street that was converted to what they call home zones in the UK. That includes parking on both sides, the parking is, it's not continuous parking, it is, it includes interruptions. It includes an entrance to slow traffic, it's narrower, and up ahead you can see there's a chicane where the road slightly curves, and there's less parking. So the parking's intermittent, it uses special paving, it has an entrance. So these kinds of features are things that are proposed in the ordinance that's before you tonight. Next slide, please. So summarize what's in the proposed ordinance, this is from the staff report. So generally, required for new multifamily and horizontal mixed-use developments that include a private internal driveway that provides vehicle access within a single project, so these are, to be clear, these are not proposed for public streets. These are proposed for private driveways within a development, with any single development. And it'd be included on driveways that function as a street or alley, where the car should not be predominant element. And it's located in proximity to residential entries and common areas, as you saw in the two examples we've gone over. And there's a requirement for a minimum hundred square feet of Wunnerf be provided per unit, so it'd be total for the project. And the hundred square feet, there are no cookie cutter standards for these, so the hundred square feet is basically a number we staff came up with based upon the Tower Apartment project, it has fifty units, and based about the amount of Wunnerf they include there, it's about hundred square feet per unit, it seemed like a reasonable number to include in this ordinance. But that's not a, it's not a one-size-fits-all, but first, based on that size of that project, that seemed like a reasonable amount. And since that's located with in Club Park seventy-two Catati, that actually, that project's actually in Runner Park, right next to the city limits. It seemed reasonable and realistic that be something that would be done in Catati. It shall include a clear and distinctive entrance with signage, change in pavement, and traffic calming features, as we've discussed. Next slide, please. This is something that was specifically talked about at the council, it was the transition between the street and the Wunnerf, to make sure it was safe. So this ordinance proposes a transition that would vary between twenty feet to sixty feet, between a Wunnerf entry and intersection with another driveway or street. So the twenty feet of transition would be for a minor street or from another driveway, it could be twenty feet if the Wunnerf were off a major arterial, like in East Catati Avenue, there would need to be at least a sixty-foot separation between the street and the Wunnerf. And in all cases, you need to clear twenty feet of sight distance in front of Wunnerf entry, so people, cars can have time to see that this is something different, they need to slow down and are aware of the situation. It's not around the blind curve or anything like that, so there needs to be clear twenty feet of sight distance in front of the Wunnerf. Traffic calming measures need to be look, yeah, within the Wunnerf, and with at least no more than hundred sixty feet apart. So the hundred sixty feet is is not a magic number. The city of Anchorage, Alaska's come up with some standards for private streets. And that was a number they came up with, and it seemed reasonable that you want traffic calming, but it can't be so far apart that doesn't actually calm traffic, so that was kind of a minimum standard to have that every hundred and sixty feet. An issue that has come up with various jurisdictions that have converted streets to Wunners is emergency vehicle access. And so it needs to be clear that the fire marshal needs to clear, okay, the design to make sure fire equipment, emergency vehicles can maneuver within and exit and enter the Wunnerf and provide emergency and provide a public for public safety reasons. Another standard staff is proposing is a minimum width of generally twenty-four feet, with it being greater in some locations to allow for amenities, so basically twenty-four feet is coming from the necessary width for merchants' vehicles, two cars to pass safely, and that's generally what you see in that example on East Catati Avenue, that's in the twenty-four foot width range, so that would be kind of the minimum width that's being proposed. Next slide, please. Also, there's a maximum length, this may not ever come up in a small town like Catati, but the proposals for three hundred feet maximum length. And that's to preclude drivers from getting frustrated with having to go very slow over a long distance. So that's a standards, I think that was also from Anchorage, Alaska, they this standard they developed. And also, an important aspect is minimizing or eliminating continuous curbs, so it all reads as one space that is shared. And the next one is Wunnerf shall incorporate seating, landscaping, other pedestrian and decorative amenities along its full length to promote common use of the space, so it's not just at one end or one location within the Wunnerf. So there's expected there would be amenities, landscaping, seating along the full length and various locations. Also was the decorative pavement. It can be pavers or stamped asphalt, colored concrete. That would need to be along the full width and and length of the Wunnerf. And in some cases that you've seen, some of these Wunners have parking and some do not. Generally, on the conversion of streets, you will often see parking intermittent within the Wunnerf. In some cases, you may see parking adjacent to the Wunnerf, so the proposed standards would allow parking provided it's intermittent, and it's not like a double-loaded parking lot, in that example in Minneapolis. Something that would need to be have gaps in it, and so the parking is not the predominant element of the Wunnerf. Next slide, please. I think that's a repeat, so we'll go to the next slide. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution recommending of the council amend the land use code to adopt a Wunnerf living street, multi-use standards for multifamily in mixed-use developments. Next slide. Are there any questions of staff at this point?
Sorry about that, had some trouble getting off mute. Okay, so we will open it up to questions and comments from the commission. And I see some hands, so I will start just down the list here, Commissioner Hancock.
Yes, hello, thank you, very interesting. So as a multi-use, would that also include being able to not have, well, have stormwater aspects to it, perhaps be a concrete pay, a concrete lattice work, so that it's literally a living street with with green growing through it? I mean, I think, thinking of this for for this area where we need infiltration. And so that's one question that's on there. A second question would be, would this be appropriate for something like Windmill Farms Drive, should ever that come up? I mean, it's longer, I think, than three hundred feet, so I'm just not sure as three hundred feet, you know, what would be driving that? Another sort of question about that, that, you know, really flexibility, we're talking about, I think, flexibility for a a developer as well as open space. Would this concept have fitted with the Frog Song setting? With the way they've got all of their parking on the side, it's a driveway off the road. So anyway, three questions to start off with, thank you very much.
So I will answer the Commissioner Hancock's questions. So on the turf block, staff did discuss that at the, and originally when this was discussed near open space or the objective standards that went before the commission. The question that came up with turf block in multi-use is whether having children riding bicycles or playing ball, those kind of activities, whether that would work on turf block, so with staff's position, that it should be something smooth and flat, and so it could be multi-use, and with turf block, that seemed to be problematic, where you could get all those different types of uses. So that was, that was a concern, so I would say turf, the way that was, the ordinance was thought of as turf block would not be a good multi-use material. Unless there's material, maybe there's some turf block out there I'm not aware of, but with my experience, what I've seen, I would say, I can't, I'm not picturing it being good for multi-use. The Windmill Farms, I don't, maybe Commissioner House or Director House has some information, I don't have, I've not looked specifically at Windmill Farms Drive, the way the ordinance is written, there's some language at the very end that gives the commission and council some options to do something different. So there is flexibility built into the ordinance to allow variations from that standard. And the Frog Song, I I've walked through the project, I'm not, I think if it's kind of what I've seen as kind of a typical parking lot situation, I would say it would be difficult having to have a Wunnerf where you have kind of open parking on both sides. If it looks like a street or an alley, then it would work. So if you had garages with garage doors where the garage doors, where the garages are completely enclosed with doors, you're not seeing continuous cars. That may work for a Wunnerf, but if it's just an open parking lot with just open carports, I would say that would not be a good use for a Wunnerf to be located in those situations.
Thanks, Julia, I would just add a couple of things, so with the turf block, I think turf block could function as parts of a Wunnerf. Parking spaces, absolutely. If it was a portion of part of the Wunnerf, no question, but for the continuous entire drive aisle, we would probably look to have some different materials provided. And then I do think that the Windmill Farms Drive would actually be too long under this ordinance, the part of the goal to limit the overall length is to avoid kind of driver frustration. You know, we want to, we want these to be intermixed spaces where bicyclists and pedestrians and and vehicles all interact. And and what we've seen through our research is that the the overall length of them is intentionally limited, so a driver in a automobile isn't feeling overall frustration by, basically they can see the end of this slowed-down kind of meandering area that they're sharing the space with, so then they can get through that and then get onto the driveway. So there, it is intentional to limit their kind of overall length to avoid that issue. And I am not familiar with enough with Frog Song to be able to provide any additional feedback on that.
Thank you, I'll hold the rest of my questions till later.
Thank you, Commissioner Hancock. Commissioner Moore?
Yes, I had a couple of questions. One is, if you look at the Tower Apartments, there's a stop sign and right in the middle, and I wanted to say, is that typical of having something like this? Also, the speed limit, you keep saying lower speed limits, but there's not a speed limit that was actually said what the speed limit is on these. And for me, one of the the other questions was, one of the pictures that you put, the cars were vertical parked, was that a one-way? Because it didn't look like there was a two-way traffic on that one street. And then the other thing is the safety of these, you're going to have kids playing, you know, people in and out with cars. It's definitely one of those things where it's going to be interactive, this is something new for Catati. And what kind of, you know, education is going to be going around this so that people absolutely know that they're not going to come in flying down one of these, you know, at twenty-five, thirty miles an hour and and some kind of tragedy is going to happen. So those are my concerns, those are my questions.
Okay, and the example, Commissioner Moore, the example with the stop sign, that that is something, it's a suburban housing project. So they had a, that stop sign is kind of what they're doing as an, as they're proposing an entrance, is that you stop at that point, so that's stuff that they have there, they put in is how they've done that. Especially say you've come to the pedestrian-only area, that's the area around the mailboxes. So that's kind of, before that, you have an area where it's not really a Wunnerf, but it kind of would lead you into it. So what's proposed here is there'd be a ramp up or a chicane, or and a sign, not necessarily a stop sign is not proposed, but there would be something different, so that's how that project is doing it. Is what they stopped sign, they've done another project over in Runner Park that has a similar situation where they have an open space courtyard that goes through the middle of a parking driveway with a stop sign on each side. So that's how that that project is done, how they have they've done their entrance. In the ordinance, I didn't go over, but in the ordinance, there is a speed limit, and that's eight miles per hour, that would be marked. So in the ordinance itself, it actually shows an example of an entrance sign, and with an eight mile per hour sign as part of that. So safety is a concern that was discussed at council, and staff has looked at that. So basically, the way that safety, how safety is looked at in these, is you try to for- force cars to slow down by putting in measures with the ramp-ups, chicanes, the narrowing, the signs, the pavement. So people know that this is a different kind of area, I live, I do live in a multifamily project in Santa Rosa where where people do use the driveways, they're not Wunners, and there's nothing special designed about them, where people are walking in them and kids are riding their bikes. And so the goal is that, the thing is that kids and people are doing this anyway in the driveway, so if we can design them so it's safer to use by using the the force measures to slow people down, that would make these existing driveways safer than if we just left them as they are. So that that's the thinking, if you make it a special place, people will will slow down. But yeah, there is no guarantees with these, but the thinking is they make it safer than just having a regular parking lot that kids are using anyway for bicycling and such. Does that answer the?
I wanted to say, is most of these one-way, or are they both ways?
I haven't seen a pattern, it depends on the width of the street, I think the one in Houston that was kind of a bad example was a one-way, it was a narrow street. The one in Santa Monica, I think, I think it really, I don't think, I haven't seen any, it depends on the width of the street, a lot of these are conversion of existing streets. It also depends if they have parking on one side or two sides. I think the ones in the Netherlands, which are pretty narrow streets, those are probably one-way. At least for the motorists, maybe two-way for bicyclists. So I don't think there's a common cookie cutter approach for this one-way or two-way.
I I like that, I think that's a good feature in that maybe if it is intended to have two-way traffic, that there's areas where there's not enough room for two cars to pass, so it would just be another traffic calming measure that would be incorporated into it, and staff can look at that as we move forward with the ordinance.
All right, thank you, those are my questions for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Lemus?
Yeah, so my question is, um. Is there going to be some set criteria for the number of items or elements, um, such as benches or landscaping, you know, per one hundred feet? Is there gonna be like a, some kind of preset criteria for that, or, I I know you're trying to avoid continuous curb, but um. Without kind of some preset criteria per one hundred feet, I'm wondering um, what the thought is on that.
So in the standard, there's no pre- basically it says there needs to be those features along the entire length, so it's not like you'd have a vernif. And just in the middle, you have the seating and landscaping. So if you have nine hundred square feet per unit along that entire length, you're gonna need to have all the features of a vernif. So that's the intent, it's not so many, I guess, there's not, there is not a standard for so many benches per hundred square feet, but there is. Critter that they need to be included throughout the vernif, but. There is like, the way the ordinance is written, it would allow a flexibility for that to be proposed by the developer for staff and the commission to review. What they're proposing to determine if that's adequate or not.
Okay, so something we'd be able to kind of review ahead of time and say, well, it's not enough or um, it needs more barriers or something.
Yeah, so if a developer, when he comes in with a project, he would need to show the design was vernif. And he needs to show that he's meeting the purpose, so that's why at the beginning of the ordinance, it should tells a lot about the purpose and how a vernif should work. And there would be a judgment called by staff and the, let's say, in the decision makers on whether it meets that intent, that's. Having enough features to slow traffic down, has enough amenities. Uh, so those things would, those kind of, I guess, would, there would be quite a bit discretion needed to make sure. You know, because it's gonna be, there's not like a cookie cutter approach, uh, there's not a one-size-fits-all, so it's gonna be depending upon the size of the vernif they're using. Um, and every site's different, so the the goal was to allow flexibility in how they do that.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Commissioner Hancock, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, I do, thank you. I mean, very interesting discussion and and as a new feature, um, it really does stimulate a lot of thinking, but. And and um, in this case, the um, I I was wondering the the difference between a driveway. Which is something for transition through versus access to a parking space. I mean, because those to me seem to be the same thing, but it almost seems like there's a differentiation here that. Um, the way you were referring to it. It, I mean, from the flexibility, we're looking at flexible approaches, and so from the. Why wouldn't we leave that up to the builder? So anyways, what's the difference between a driveway? And the access to the parking spaces?
Yeah, the, there's not a big difference, so um, I think when some, when I've said driveways before, some people. Think that sounds too much like it's for motorists only, because you're driving a car. An accessway sounds like it's more open to everybody, so. It's kind of, I I just kind of using the same, a different term to mean kind of the same thing, it's something, it's like. Generally in the, I guess we generally refer to the, we refer to these as driveways. Uh, but also there are accessways for pedestrians and and accessways to parking spaces, so. I would say they're somewhat interchangeable, those terms.
Yeah, and I I would just add, how staff thought about it is the areas uh, or the portions of a driveway or an access aisle. That are close to residences' front and back doors are the places we thought these would be the most appropriate. Versus, you know, in a in a, a parking area that was maybe a far, far away from where folks are actually living and and interacting. That's not an appropriate location for this type, because it's it's gonna be generally just serving the automobiles. And so rather than trying to say, you know, a driveway versus a drive aisle, we actually looked as to how they would be situated on the site. Um, for some of the the specific criteria.
So we're looking at fairly, follow-up question here, we're looking at fairly small projects and it's all private. Why wouldn't we try and just leave it up to the flexibility within constraints of the um developer? For whatever they come up with, whether it be another co-housing group that might be very focused around. Um, minimizing the the vehicles versus a developer that says, hey, I want to sell to people who. Will want to drive, will want to access their 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 garage, their their covered carport and stuff. Why would, why would we want to try and differentiate too much between those?
Uh, Commissioner Hancock, I think the, the concept was, I think that one example in Minneapolis, which showed is, you know, is this, that's in your staff report about. Where it's just kind of a fancy parking lot, so I think what staff was trying to do is say. If basically if it's an area that's dominated by the cars, it's basically a parking lot. That we're not gonna just kind of pretty it up and make a vernif out of it, it needs to be something that's designed differently from a parking lot. So I think that was the goal is um, not giving it to, where they were seeing what a vernif is and what it isn't. And so that does reduce the amount of freedom, because um. There was, I think, some concern when this was at the council, some of the questions came up. There was, it's just a fancy parking lot, is that what we're talking about? So I think what staff was reduced, come with the, I put the ordinance saying, yeah, if it's just a parking lot. Yeah, that's not, you can't just convert that to a vernif, it needs to be something more special. Uh, than just a drive aisle within a parking lot, so that was what staff was trying to come up with with the different standards, to give that. The developer quite a bit of direction on what they need to do to to create a vernif.
And I would just add, um, so. The the discussion for this item and the need for it to come back to the planning commission actually came out because the city council. Um, they did not support staff's recommendation to allow this to count as part of the open space. So they really like the feature as a design feature in in future developments. But it does not give the developer any any credit towards their open space requirements, so this will be above and beyond. The normal open space that's required, and so that's, that's also why some of the um. The parsing uh that staff's doing is we want it to be a functional design feature. But not just a requirement that doesn't provide overall benefit and amenities to the folks living there.
Right, so amenities of having a usable space that's safe, that a parent would judge it as safe. Isn't really the criteria. I mean, however, we, a developer might like access, might want to have access for vehicles. Onto the property, maybe will be required probably to have some sort of parking, but they. But that space that the vehicles have to transition through, I mean, that's the space that I would think. However it is designated, that's the space we want to have as multi-use and try and. Structure it to have either some kids be able to play football on there or be able to get out and play on small bikes, so. So it seems to me it's just, that's the question, is how to make it feel safe and how any vehicles entering there. Will not, will face a physical damage to their vehicle if they travel too fast. That would be my sort of approach on that. The other question I got perhaps on the um aspect of. Um, the uh fire department. Um, the safety side, it, does their comments become part of the process? Does it become part of the record?
So when a project, if when a developer. 做一个 project that does get referred to the fire department at the very beginning, so. When a project comes in, like every other project, they will need to uh comply with uh, the access required by the fire fire marshal, so. That is part of every project, uh, so. So that's why these standards are written, that they would, basically they're not really narrow driveways, they still need to meet their fire department for width and access. So it's to be clear that when a developer comes in, he maybe comes in with a concept that he would run that by the fire marshal, knowing it well in advance. Whether there's gonna be any issues or not.
But that that commentary that might come back from the um, uh, from the fire marshal, does that become part of the public record?
Yeah, yes, it does.
Okay, excellent, thank you. So I don't have any more questions.
Thanks, Commissioner Hancock. Um, I have a few items here. Um, in in looking at our language and standards and also looking at the many examples you provided, and thank you for that. Um, there are a couple of things that came to mind for me. One was a lot of the examples that were provided, um, were from primarily European countries. And I I assume, as you mentioned, that's because we don't see these a lot in um, the United States, let alone California. So exciting that we're bringing in new ideas. I think my concern there um goes back to how much guidance we provide in the standard. Uh, I know usually I would say flexibility is um very valuable um to encourage creativity. Uh, but I think with this, I I'm a little bit concerned in that if we don't provide more strict standards within the ordinance. Um, just seeing some of the examples, it seems like it could easily go toward an alley or an alley look. As opposed to um, a communal space. Uh, the example that we had from the housing in East Katati felt a little bit more bare, and uh, when I went over there. I noticed that that was very different than maybe, and I don't think this is a vernif, but um, the housing over on Alder. Seems to have very communal roads. Um, and one of the things I thought maybe is playing into that is what's opening up to those streets. Whether it be garages or front doors or um, some sort of space where people are coming in and out, and it's just more communal, and so. Um, that was something that stood out to me, if there was a way to provide clearer guidance that would maybe drive the developer to do that. Um, particularly if if a developer isn't used to creating this sort of um look and feel. Since we don't have it much around here, it just felt to me like a little bit more structure would be helpful. Another thing that stood out to me was, we talked about maybe making the road. Smaller and one way to help slow traffic down, which makes a lot of sense to me. Funny enough, I was thinking twenty-four feet, I think, is right around the standard with for a residential road, and. I felt like sometimes that can feel very small and you almost don't want to walk on it. Because there's not enough room for a car and a person and a bike, and maybe having a requirement for a larger width. Would would actually create more s- room for everyone. Um, I'm certainly not an expert by any means, especially on how we slow traffic down, but I would think, you know. If there were some sort of um, like. Uh, I don't know what the word is, but barriers coming out and then going back in with vegetation or landscaping, that would naturally slow people down. And maybe then having those wider streets would allow people to feel like if they're on the street, playing soccer or walking or. You know, riding their bike, it's easy for them to veer over to the right when a car's coming and not be completely off of the street and then be able to veer back in. And so, um. I'm not sure if that feedback is too broad, but those were just some of the concerns that came to mind to me, what was the width of the required width. And then um, the required minimum width, and then also um, if there's just any more. Like very clear guidance that we could provide to ensure that it's more of a vernif communal space and less of an alley.
I, yeah, I I, yeah, I, though those, all the comments, I understand, uh, because. That was some of the same issue staff was looking at, was trying to come up with something that is communal. Uh, and, and still allow some flexibility, so I get, what I'm hearing is more strict. Standard, and to be clear that you, the twenty-four feet was too narrow, is that correct?
Well, my my thought was that something that had a larger minimum width would maybe open the space up more. And help provide a feeling of, we can walk here and drive here and ride here, although earlier I. We did talk about making it more narrow to slow cars down, and that that does make sense to me, so. Um, I, you know, I feel like I was proven wrong there, but um, but yeah, I just. Uh, some of the pictures we saw felt, especially with buildings on both sides with very little landscaping, it felt a bit claustrophobic. And almost like an alley and not very inviting to walk down, and I'm feeling, I'm thinking if this is an ordinance. Ordinance where the developers required to do it, I would hate for them to just kind of add it on. Without really having the 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 thought of the idea of it being a communal space. Um. And of course, I'm sure we could provide that feedback when we go into design review and whatnot, but. It seems like if there is opportunity to just provide clear, clear guidance on what we would be expecting, that may be helpful.
And sure, actually, one thing in the ordinance said, maybe it needs to be clear, there was a provision that states that twenty-four feet is a minimum. Minimum, but it needs to be wider in other locations to allow for amenities like seating and other elements. So the thought was, it's not like twenty-four feet discontinuous, but it is something that does open up. At other locations to provide those amenities that you may be talking about, like in the example over on the East Katati. In the middle, it does open up to that little park area. Um, it doesn't read as part of the vernif, but it it's something like that staff was envisioning, that the twenty-four feet is a. At the minimum, uh, that's the narrowest at any point, but it will be, it should be wider in other locations.
Mm-hmm.
Just per, per the chair, I I think this is a time to ask staff questions, and then I think there should be an open. For the, anything for the public and then a board discussion, which I think some of these topics cover, uh, just anyway, that's bringing up that point.
Thank you, Commissioner Hancock. Um, so I think the only, the the, I realize the question is a bit broad there, but I think the question is. If the staff has any other recommendations that would um. Help provide uh reassurance that we would end up with less of an alley and more of a communal space. That would be my request, and um. If you have an answer to that now, that's great, and if not, that's okay as well, we could discuss it later and open it up to public comment.
Yeah, I would say staff probably does not have an answer to that, that question at this, at this point.
Well, and I would just add, um, I do think in some cases, this actually will be, it will serve as an alley, or so. Some of the ideas that we've had is, you know, when we were coming up with the open space standards. We talked about our own experiences of, you know, some of these alley-loaded developments, which are now. Kind of our design standards push you that way, where your front door is faced onto the street. And your garages are accessed via alleys that you don't see, and if you go visit those developments, oftentimes what happens is. Uh, all the the residents roll up their garage doors, they really interact and socialize, and the kids are zooming around on their bikes, and then, you know. When the occasional car comes to use the, the alley to access their garage, and everybody kind of takes a break. So we did, and we do think that some, some alleys will be proposed to meet the vernif standards. But then we also, to your point, don't want it to be only kind of. An afterthought that is, that is put into an alley area, we want some of the circulation areas that may front against people's front doors. Uh, or maybe have side doors or or patios that access them. Uh, we want them to act, to also be able to feel that the vernif is an amenity. Even if there's a parking space as a part of it or a drive, you know, part of the circulation for the overall site.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, I think the answer is. There's a level of confidence that through some of the other design guidance that we have within Katati. We could easily tie that to what we're doing here and likely be able to have that requirement, even though it's not in this particular ordinance.
Absolutely.
I see, okay, sounds good. Um, I will um, just check once again before we open it to public comment that there aren't any more questions for staff. Can raise your hand if there are. Okay, then we will open it up to questions, um, public comment on this issue.
Eris Weaver, you have your hand up, go ahead.
Hi, um, Eris Weaver, I'm a Katati resident, I live at Frog Kong, and I am also executive director of Sanm County Bicycle Coalition. Um, I really like the whole uh idea in general, and I just love. That our little tiny town is um so willing to be um. Uh, brave and bold and experimental and do things that nobody else in the county is doing yet, so I I really want to um thank everyone for that. That said, I don't think that this ordinance is written and these standards go far enough. Um, one of the things that really struck me in looking at all the photos was there was. In my mind, a huge difference between the examples in the US and UK. Uh, compared to the Dutch and and other parts of Europe, and that is, the ones that you showed are. Um, wider and straighter, in other words, more likely to make cars drive faster. The the Dutch examples, I I watched a lot of videos, looked at a lot of photos online today before the meeting. Um, they were narrow, they were more wandering, the the bullbouts and the planting and all that stuff. Required the vehicles to kind of do a a sinuous path, which slows them down. And most of the American sections did not, uh, images did not include that, nor does the one here in Katati. When I looked at that photo of the one here in Katati, I thought that doesn't look like an inviting space, and part of it, it just looks like. A driveway with fancy pavement on it, it's straight, and none of the houses, it was all the backs of the houses, none of the houses opened onto it. And none of the houses, it was all the backs of the houses, none of the houses opened onto it, it needs to be. Part of people's living if you think people were gonna go out and use it, as I think someone else already mentioned. Um, so I wouldn't be surprised if that, I don't know how that one gets used, but it didn't look that inviting. Um, I think twenty-four feet is too wide. Um, if the whole point and, and, and someone mentioned not, not wanting to irritate drivers for, you know, getting impatient. Let's frickin' irritate some drivers, okay, as a cyclist, I'm pretty irritated by always being the, the um. You know, drivers getting the um alliance share of resources and if the whole. Point of this is to make it more friendly for pedestrians and bicyclists and more people in the street, we really need to go overboard in that direction. It needs to not, there needs to be something in there that, that requires the driving path to be curved. Um, it needs to be narrower and it needs to be where houses actually open out onto it, that it isn't this. You know, the alleys in the neighborhood next to mine, you know, are, are all ugly and look like. The back of something you're not supposed to look at, you know, it's where you put your trash and stuff. Um, so, and I would love to see doing some of this in other, other streets in the city and not just. Limit, limiting this to new construction, but I do think it really needs to um. Uh, yeah, uh narrower and not and, and curvilinear. So that it really does slow the cars if you really are serious about uh wanting people to. Walk and ride and play in it, thank you.
Thank you for your comment and feedback.
Sure, Murphy, that will end public comment.
Thank you. I am gonna open it back up now to additional comments and or questions from the commission, Commissioner Hancock.
Yes, hello, I really appreciate Eris being able to give that view and I completely agree with it as a um, a bicyclist. Um, being concerned about frustrated drivers seems really against the principles of what we're trying to do. I mean, generally, I would sort of say we're trying to be too prescriptive on some of this that. Um, the sort of principles, I think, are um, you know, about making it a safe place. And the four principles that Arcata came up with, which I think were outlined on the beginning slide. Are what's important, that sinuosity, having that there. I completely agree that I think the mandatory minimum width. Could be seventeen feet, I went out and measured it on my driveway. So the idea being there, of course, the developer, whoever, the site architect would design it so that it works. But there's no reason why there can't be some necking at some points that really make the um. That maybe allow one vehicle through and maybe that would have to be the size of a, an emergency vehicle access, but. Um, it's all about designing it for the, if you like, the kids to play. And making it that the parents think that they're playing safe and that a driver isn't gonna come through there. And go too fast because there's gonna be these sinusoidal type things, so um I would say let's reduce the. Twenty-four foot to maybe seventeen feet, um, take off the three hundred foot limit that's on there. Um, just keep the principles of safety visible, um, and see, it's a driveway, it's not a street, so it is. It is about how the vehicles move from the street. Onto the property as I would, anyway, I'll throw that open for, for, for discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Hancock, Commissioner Moore.
I just had a, a couple um kind of concerns about the, the width of the street, so. Just where I live, the, the width of the street is, is huge, just like forty, I don't know, forty-something feet across. And in L section and everybody walks in the street, nobody uses the sidewalk, it's very, like, everybody just walks in the street. So um, I, I think that's kind of neither here nor there on, on the width. I, when we designed uh McMeness, which is over by Co-Housing and. Um, all those developments were put in Charles Street. It was intentionally put in with twenty-four square, or it's twenty-four n- narrow width of the street. To slow traffic down and um. Yeah, not everybody loves an alleyway, but I do love an alleyway there and I think it has slowed traffic down, we walk there quite often. And I, I, I drive in there and it's, and it's, it's slowed traffic down, you really have to pay attention. Um, and again, people walk in the street, they don't really use the sidewalk there. So you have to pay attention, people walking across to the vets building, you know, and, and down by the bridge. There, if anything, that would be a great um, great um test right there. To do a vernif of that area because it's so small. Um, I really like the idea and I like the idea that we're, that we're, we're doing better design. And we're not leaving enough to developer to do whatever they want. Um, in my. Experience, when you leave it up to a developer to do whatever they want, they do whatever they want and they don't really do the best design. So I like the idea of having some really good design around this. And what we're going to do and what we're asking for. Um, I think this is a great concept, when I was in Europe, I walked a lot of these, I loved them. I, I thought they were very safe, cars are very small in Europe. So, you know, you have Mini Coopers, you don't have huge SUVs and Cadillacs going through. Um, so it makes it just a, a different kind of animal on that. So I walked a lot of these smaller little alleyways and, and streets. They seemed just very safe and people didn't speed as much, so anyways, I, I love this idea, I'm in favor of it. Um, but I, I would like to have it, see it tweak just a little bit to make it. Um, actually just, just make it m- more um design than, than. Than the developer would, would have a flexibility as, so those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Um, I don't see a hand from Commissioner Lemus, so I do. Uh, is that correct, Commissioner Lemus?
Yeah, no, I, I was just gonna just say, um, I, I don't have anything else to say, I said it in my first comment, it's about. Trying to build some criteria elements around, um, you know, like other people saying, so developers not so open. Will help for safety, I think, and for making it more usable uh vernor for.
Chairman, if you're on mute, thank you.
Thank you, um, I do wanna go back um to Commissioner Hancock whose hand was up, but I wanna summarize that what I'm hearing. From all of the commissioners, I believe, is that we would like some more um guidance included. In the ordinance to ensure that we are creating the space that our intention is. Um, uh, so with that, I'll ask Commissioner Hancock if you had additional thoughts or questions.
Right, so I, you know, I think we're at the stage where we're trying to give concrete advi- advice from the, the commission and I would just ask. Um, do we want to remove the words to reduce driver frustration and the full length? Um, do we want to have any limitation on the length of three hundred feet, which. Is probably not likely to limit stuff in Khatati, but if there was a longer project, um, it would. I'm just wondering what people's thoughts are on that.
And I think I, the other thing I, thank you, Commissioner Hancock, that I heard was, um, in addition to the length. The minimum width that perhaps some people had feedback on reducing the minimum width. Um, to a smaller width in order to reduce traffic speed.
Right, well.
Accurate?
Well, all I wanted to do was bring out that one item just to see if I was in the minority there, if the other three commissioners all think that that's reasonable. Then it would be left, but if it's. Um, if, if uh, having to reduce driver frustration as a cyclist, that's not a. Concept I necessarily understand, but anyways, I'm just trying to do it one item at a time.
Okay, is every um one in agreement on re- removing the language of reducing driver frustration? I am. Correct, okay, I'm seeing a head nod from Commissioner Moore and Commissioner Lemus.
Thank you, and the three hundred feet?
I'm okay with the three hundred feet being removed, but I do think that if it was any longer. It just becomes an alleyway, it does, doesn't become a, a usable space anymore, um. That's my only, I, I don't know, and maybe I haven't seen as many and so I would have to see more. Um, vunriffs, you know, as, but the ones I've seen are pretty small, or, or three, three hundred to four hundred feet.
Okay, and I have some thoughts on that, but Commissioner Lemus, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, and I think, I'm okay with the three hundred feet as well, um, as long as there's um interjections kind of along the way. Um, depending on the different elements that we've used, you know, um, but I don't know if we're gonna talk about width now or.
I, I, I will absolutely come back to you, Commissioner Lemus, um, when we get to the width conversation. I had a follow-up question for staff on this then, for the three hundred feet, could you remind me, I, I believe we didn't have precedent for it. But we felt like that was a reasonable length, um, could you remind us again where we came up with the three hundred feet?
Uh, the city of Anchorage, Alaska, they have, they've developed some standards uh for private streets. And that was a standard they came up with. Um, that they used for three hundred feet, that, so that's what I know about the three hundred feet, so other cities using it. And so staff included it.
Okay, thank you, um. W- with the minimal benchmarking and, and that's to no one's fault, cuz I know that we don't see this much here. I, I don't have a um, a preference on, you know, minimum of three hundred or maximum of three hundred. So I would be comfortable keeping it as is. Um, how does the rest of the commission feel about that, keeping the three hundred foot language that we currently have in the ordinance?
I, I think I'm fine with it, but I, you know, when you say it's just one city, Anchorage, Alaska, and then there's other cities, what are the other cities?
Most of these standards, there, there is no cookie cutter approach, most cities have not adopted standards for vunriffs. It's, it's all case by case, the only city I found that had any standards for vunriffs in the US was Anchorage, Alaska. And so I, I would just add, we saw several examples of new projects in multiple states proposing them, but no city had. Kind of mandated it other than Anchorage and then created standards around it. Uh, to address this, one, one um kind of flexible language could be just, should seek to limit but not require it, so that way. You're providing some direction to the developer, but also it gets to some of the flexibility issues that we've talked about.
How would the, thank you, that's very helpful, how would the commission feel about adding the language, should seek to limit? I see a nod from Commissioner Moore, a thumbs up from Commissioner Hancock. And a nod from Commissioner Lemus, this is all for the record.
Thank you.
Wonderful, okay, um, our third item is in regard to the width. And we have had discussions on the twenty-four foot minimum versus a, a smaller width minimum. In an effort to reduce traffic, does, do any of the commissioners have questions or comments on that, Commissioner Lemus?
Yeah, I think right now they're requesting our twenty-four feet width. But I think a lot would depend, when we're talking about safety, is the emergency vehicles, like what is the requirement? For access, you know, I think that would be important for me in making a decision on, on the width for, for this.
So maybe, uh, maybe direct hash can uh confirm, but I believe typically it's twenty feet. Width for fire equipment, is that right, Noah? You know, I've seen several different, it depends on whether it's two-way traffic or one-way traffic. Um, also, there's individual circumstances, we would, as a part of this for new development, we would require the traffic engineer of the project to provide. Um, direction and, and kind of uh input on the design. So if the commission. Man, I'm struggling because we also have some street standards that um. We would look to, to inform the design of these, even though they are private streets. So a lot of it's gonna depend on a single, you know, one-way traffic versus two-way traffic. Um, I think the EVA access and input from, from public safety, but twenty feet would be a safe width, definitely. Uh, and then we would, uh, what I'm hearing is to provide some more uh direction regarding um. Curvilinear design and also kind of features that interject into that width to provide a pedestrian refuge, those types of things.
Yes, I, I think that's accurate, um, Commissioner Moore, did you have a question or comment on that?
I just know that, um, I guess that just the width of the, of the streets on McMeness are twenty-four. If anybody's ever driven those, they're pretty narrow, they're very narrow, both ways. So I couldn't imagine bringing them down to twenty feet. Um, with parking even on one side of that street, so. That would be my thing is twenty-four feet would be the, the very minimum.
I, I appreciate that feedback, um, Commissioner Hancock?
Yeah, I mean, I, I. Cycle up McMeness a lot and it is a public street versus a driveway. And all re- all really asking on here or suggesting on here is, is that the. Do- design criteria, um, should there be a narrow um access, which. You know, can happen, is, is that it would be, you know, I would go with the twenty feet. Um, that it be accessible for a emergency vehicle. But not necessarily for two local residents to be able to pass each other. That, that, that aspect of residents paying attention. And I've had it on a lot of streets in the past, much narrower, public streets where. Basically, you can see ahead, there's only one vehicle that's gonna get through. Um, and you see an oncoming vehicle, so you pull over into a place to let them park, pass. So it's just that, that concept of a minimum fitting within it, not necessarily that that's what will happen. I mean, we're basically saying by something that we haven't really discussed, but I, I, I go with it. That, that the hundred square foot per unit really will drive. What the developer has to do to make the space there and that. I'd certainly in my, my book, from an act of transportation, from encouraging people to get out and walk. Um, any space that's on a, on a project, um, that is shared with vehicles. From the point of view of a driveway vehicle, not a street, it should be multi-use and should be very, um. You know, really inform the driver that they can proceed with caution, so. Um, I'm just really emphasizing that multi-use aspect for any space that has, where vehicles can transition through. I think we come from a driver-dominated culture where we think all the time of, of vehicles and blacktop. And that's what's got us into a lot of trouble, so just my input would be thumbs up twenty feet, but I, I, you know, we'll go with. Go with the commission if everybody else wants to go with what we currently have.
Thank you, Commissioner Hancock, any other thoughts on the width and then I think we will need to get. Everyone's feedback to determine what we move forward with. Okay, um, so, um, I believe Commissioner Hancock, you're in support of twenty feet. Um, Commissioner Moore, I don't wanna speak for you, so I'll, I just want to confirm what you're in support of.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, um, Commissioner Lemus?
Um, it depends on emergency vehicle, um, you know, to use the, the. So otherwise twenty-four feet, but smaller or narrower if, if an emergency vehicle.
And, and is it helpful, um, I, I believe what Joel did. Uh, provide us information on was that twenty feet is, there is his understanding of what would be required for an emergency vehicle. I'm not sure if that changes your thoughts on that at all.
So even with the turns and um different, you know, if they, if they put in elements of twenty feet would still be enough?
They, they typically, we need twenty feet fear, free and clear of any parking or other, you know, planters or anything. They typically, that's a free and clear width. Uh, so the thought of the twenty-four feet, it would allow uh for them to get through, although maybe some other amenities might be in that twenty-four feet. As long as they had the twenty feet clear uh to drive through.
To drive through, so that was one reason staff proposed twenty-four feet and not twenty. So if it's twenty feet minimum, that's pretty much all gonna be some kind of pavement. That's not gonna allow them, room for planters or seating within that, that twenty feet. So. The twenty-four feet seemed like it would allow, in, in those, some situations where allow. Some amenities or something else in that area. So that was why there was the minimum. Should be no less than twenty-four feet. In other cases, we'll need to be wider for amenities, but that's where staff came up with the twenty-four feet.
Then, then I would go with the twenty-four feet because I wouldn't want to sacrifice the amenities that we needed to for it to be a winner.
Thank you, Commissioner Lemus. I, I will support the twenty-four feet as well. And I really appreciate the in-depth conversation about this. I know we're trying to find the right ways to. Set specific standards to make this the best space possible. I have some additional thoughts, but I do want to make sure I've heard. All the feedback from the commission here, so I will open it up to any other questions, comments, thoughts from the commissioners. Commissioner Hancock?
Yeah, just to say I really like it. I like that we're actually doing it. And it's about visualizing that shared usage. I would definitely like to see a. The living street portion of it be a, the concrete lattice pavers. There are some examples in Qatati which have been in the ground forty years. I'm happy to show people where they are and also in Rona Park. So that would allow kids to play on their bicycles and everything, allow water to infiltrate as well. And yeah, it's great to see it and. I think it's trimming some of it in some areas like I've been sort of suggesting, but I, I think it's. The, the driving force in here, the, the real sort of context for creating some vunners is what. There's hundred square feet. Per dwelling unit that would be required. So whether or not the, the, there, there's only minimums of the street being required, but the hundred square feet would require the larger area. And that would be where much more of the slowdown would appear or the ability to get off the street. So anyway, it's great, thumbs up, it's great to see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hancock. Commissioner Moore? Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Lemus?
Oh, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree wholeheartedly. This is really exciting to see something new coming into the community and. I think that our community is heavily focused on. Pedestrian safety and bicycle safety, so this is one more step toward that. I'm, I. I don't wanna be too stringent in the guidance that we provide, because I think flexibility is, is key, but. I really hope that when we see this in some of the design reviews that come before the commission in the future, that. We see some great landscaping, plenty of space, open. Spaces and buildings coming onto the road, less of that alleyway, less of the small landscaping portions and much broader. That really helps create a nice transition between where the cars are driving and where pedestrians and bicyclists and other will be. Walking and using the space as well. So I'm hopeful that we will see that and, and I'm absolutely in support of this. And so with that, I will ask. If anyone would like to. Sorry, was there a question? Okay, sorry. Okay, so I would like to move on to the resolution. And ask if anyone. I'm gonna pull it up here so that we have it. Okay, do I have anyone who would like to? Start by supporting the resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Chair Murphy. Make a motion to approve resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Qatati recommending the City Council adopt amendments to. Title seventeen land use of the Qatati Municipal Code to establish standards and regulations regarding to the development of vunners. Living streets, multiple use zones within multi-family projects. And horizontal mixed-use developments and other private development projects by adding section F to chapter seventeen. With the language that was included with the planning commission.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Can I second it?
Thank you. Can we have a vote? Or a roll call?
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lemus?
Yes.
Chair Murphy?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. That was great discussion. And wonderful presentation. Thank you very much, Joel. We, we will move into the next item. Which is reports by staff.
Thank you, Chair Murphy. Just wanted to give a brief update to the commission. On the twenty-sixth of October, the City Council did adopt the design standards that you all spent so much time on with. Senior Planner. Galbraith. And so as a part of that discussion, they asked that the vernors be pulled out, and that's how we're here. So those moved forward, they're adopted. And staff has had an SB three thirty project filed. So that's different than some of the SB thirty-five projects we discussed, but. Just know it was very good timing with getting those done. So thank you very much to Joel and the commission for moving that along and the council ultimately being able to adopt them. To have that in place ahead of the development coming in. It's just a concept application, so I don't wanna spend any time on it, but I'll definitely update the commission if it chooses to move forward. Similarly, in that same meeting, the, the. City manager presented an item asking the City Council to kind of. Reevaluate the priorities that we set during strategic planning back in the spring. Because a number of kind of other issues that were pressing had come up in the community. And so we really just wanted to allow the council and, and the citizens to provide an additional kind of. Look back at, at what we had said we were gonna spend our resources on for the, the fiscal year, reevaluate that and provide some additional direction. And so. Out of that discussion, the council was able to kind of shift some of the staff work with regards to some of the housing element. Onto the housing element consultants themselves. And put a pause on some of the other work that we had identified as needed, but. You know, the timing of it was a little bit more flexible. And in place of that, they asked staff to prioritize. Gas station ban or fossil fuel ban in keeping with what the City of Petaluma has done, and I think City of Sebastopol is moving forward with. And basically, most of the other communities in the county are anticipating moving forward with a similar ban, so the commission can expect to see that coming. Being brought by staff in the relatively near term. And similarly, to move forward with making some changes to the current regulations regarding agricultural, agricultural uses throughout the city. There's a lot of general plan policies that, that direct us to allow agriculture. Essentially, in every zoning district. In some form, whether it's a community garden or full-on crop production. But our zoning code doesn't implement that, and so it had come to an issue. For some larger parcels that are zoned residential, but wanting to kind of maintain or, or create some agricultural activities. And then also the Faletti Ranch rezoning, which is currently zoned residential, but we need to zone it. In keeping with how it's being used and will be used, given the. Feet restriction that we put on it with the Ag and Open Space District. So those two things. Kind of coalesce around some priorities being shifted and, and so it's, the commission should anticipate seeing an urban agriculture. Zoning Code text amendment along with the Faletti Ranch rezoning coming in the relatively near term. That's all that we have that's pressing. We do continue to see a significant amount of developer interest, but not a lot of projects. Being filed yet, but, but we do anticipate a fairly busy spring and early summer for the commission. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Through the, through the chair? Would we want to go back to the approval of one set of minutes that I think we can do?
Yes, thank you for the reminder on that. So I will circle back to item C. And if we could get some guidance on the minutes that we have access to approve today per our attendance.
And so I, I think as Commissioner Hancock's probably already figured out, the meeting minutes of September twentieth are ready and able to be voted on. We have a quorum on those. Unfortunately, we do not have a quorum on the meeting minutes from September seventh. Unless Vice Chair Lemus or Commissioner Moore happen to review that meeting. And similarly with the meeting of June twenty-first. Unless Chair Murphy or Commissioner Hancock have reviewed that meeting, which is, we discussed the La Plaza View, the Reds. Recovery Room Design Review for the dispensary and then also the design standards. Unless those have been reviewed, then we, we need to move those to a different agenda when Commissioner Rodriguez is here.
I would be comfortable moving the June twenty-first and September seventh minutes to our next meeting. And we will move forward with approving the September, sorry. September twentieth, the September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one minutes. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Hancock. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Lemus. And do we need a roll call on that?
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lemus?
Yes.
Chair Murphy?
Yes. Okay, thank you. We will circle back. To item H. Which is reports by the commission. Would anyone like to provide a report? Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, I seem to be putting my hand up a lot here and stuff. Yes, I went to the Community Alliance with Family Farmers, CAF, that was held last Friday, that some of this discussion. It's about very nicely done up on. Up on the hills, and there were quite a few interesting people there, David Rabbit that I recognized, and then I was chatting with this guy, Chris Corsi. And said, you know, so you're at Santa Rosa Council? But I got that wrong. He's on the supervisors. So the, the, bit of my mistake there, but the core, I think, of what they were talking about was that this urban agriculture. The need to support per the state code. For urban farmers to easily grow and sell nuts, fruits and vegetables. And it just turns out there's a real matrix of problems. With some places not, it seems like in Qatati as well, not allowing either the, the cultivation of. Some of those fruits, nuts and vegetables, or the selling of it. And there was also somebody there from Bounty Farms in Petaluma that was talking a lot about what they have done, the urban benefits. So. I think it's really easy to underestimate just the value of having a farm within the city. We've got it with Faletti Ranch downtown, which attracts a lot of interest, but if there's. A private person who's doing some farming, you know, just the real benefit. Of doing that, and Merlin, who's the owner, is very hospitable. I think that property has a long history. I've certainly known some of the people up there. Of being very friendly and accessible, so a real sort of benefit to the community. There was also somebody from the UC Extension, Julia Kim, who was talking about just. Again, what the benefits are, and also that, you know, we really, perhaps, the way I understood it, want to focus on the fruits, nuts and vegetables. For an urban farm, other than perhaps strictly business-oriented. Cash crops, grapes, hemp, and that type of thing. So I think there is a differentiation and we can do that with a structured. Approach, so I, I hope that, look forward to that coming forward. And it was just, it was a gorgeous morning to be out there seeing. How everything was growing and the farmers and what they're doing, what they're talking about up there. So it was very good.
Thank you, Commissioner Hancock. Any other reports from the commission? Okay, great. Then we will move into item I, which is items received after the agenda was posted. Do we have any items?
No items were received.
Thank you. With that, I will tell everyone to have a wonderful Monday evening, and we will adjourn. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.